Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can we all please stand? Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds to receive your guidance so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as an elected member or as officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. In the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, would everyone leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber? Officers will be on hand to assist any people with disabilities. May I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off so that they will not disturb this meeting? It is with great sadness that I report the death of David Jennings, a sitting member and the current vice-chairman of the County Council. Mr Jennings died on the 30th of August at age 72. He had been a member of the County Council since 1997 and represented the Cosby and Countesthorpe Electoral Division. He was also an employee of the County Council between 1987 and 1996, working at Curtis Weston Care Home. Mr Jennings was a longstanding member of the Development Control and Regulatory Board and had served as its chairman between 2003 and 2011. He had also been a former chairman of the Standards Committee, Environment and Transport Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and as a scrutiny commissioner. Mr Jennings had been vice-chairman of the County Council since May 2018. He had a long career in public service. He had been a member of Blaby District Council for 40 years and was made an honoural alderman after stepping down at this May's election. He was also a parish councillor, a position he had held for 48 years. It is with sadness that I report the death of Mrs Valerie Palford, who died on the 30th of August, aged 75. She was a member of the County Council between 1985 and 1989, representing the Breedon Electoral Division. Mrs Palford mainly served on the Education Committee, Employment Committee, and Social Services Committee. I ask the members of the council to join me in standing in silent tribute to the memory of David Jennings and Valerie Palford. Thank you. Congratulations are due to Cheryl Davenport, Leicestershire's Director of Health and Care Integration, who has been appointed as Honoured Professor of Health and Care Integration at De Montfort University. Over the last five years Cheryl has brought partners together to improve healthcare for residents and led the delivery of Leicestershire's £56 million Better Care Fund, a pooled budget between the County Council and the National Health Service, which is helping to transform health and care. The appointment is in recognition for her contributions and achievements and the students at De Montfort will benefit from real-life examples of how to apply policy into practice. And having worked with Cheryl, it is well deserved. She works really hard and has done so much to get health recognised with the County Council. Professor David Wilson at DL. Members may be aware that Professor David Wilson, who chaired the council's independent remuneration panel recently, tendered his resignation. Professor Wilson served as Deputy Vice-Chancellor of De Montfort University until his retirement in 2015 and has written extensively on public sector management and local government. He is also a lay minister at Roethlisberger Parish Church and a canon of Leicester Cathedral and a member of the Crown Nominations Commission, which was responsible for the appointment of the last three bishops of Leicester. Professor Wilson has chaired the panel since 1999 and the council is greatly indebted to him for his service. I am sure all members will wish to extend thanks to him and wish him well in the future. We will of course still see Professor Wilson as he will be continuing in his role with the cathedral and as deputy lieutenant. I welcome to the meeting all visitors and guests of members and of course anyone who is joining us on the webcast today. I have done a number of visits and events since we last met, but just to mention four of them. I had the pleasure of being at Beaumont Manor Hall last week when the Lord Lieutenant and four of the deputy lieutenants presented British Empire medals. It was a really nice morning and lovely to meet these people who've done so much work and been recognised for the work that they've done in their local communities. I visited Rainbows on Saturday, which although some people say, 'Oh, that's really sad', it is, but it's also beautiful. It's a wonderful place to go and if none of you have ever been, when they have an open day, I urge you to visit. Last night I was with the Seacarets in Luthborough. We were outside and I had the pleasure of being soaked when all the wind blew the rain off the gazebo, all down one side, but that was part of the evening. And working with young people again. I've been to two or three Scouts events where they've been awarded for their achievements and they do such a lot. And I think credit to the leaders who were specially, when we went to their summer camp, and I was in Wellington's, a raincoat and a hat, wearing a chain. And it was so bad, they had to change it the following day. But for the people that were there, the young people didn't seem to mind. They enjoyed it, but it was a really nice event. Right, agenda item number two, minutes. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 10th of July 2019, copies which have been circulated to members be taken as read, confirmed, and signed.
I'll be to second those, my lady's chair.
Thank you, Mr Licarish. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations in interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I'm assuming that all members who are members of district or parish councils or representatives on quarry liaison committees will wish to declare a personal interest in item 6A, Minerals and Waste Local Plan. Are there any other declarations? Mr Payne?
Madam Chairman, can I declare an interest in item nine, which is the notice of motion about send. It's a personal interest, non pecuniary. Thank you.
Mr Coxon?
Thank you, Chairman. Personal prejudicial interest, Chairman, in the leader's statement, Chairman, with regard to HS2. I'll sit at the back when it gets to that point, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Coxon. Any more declarations? Dr Iain?
Thank you, Chair. I have two declarations of interest. One is in the position statement from the lead member on equalities, community engagement, and rule of partnerships. And that's because I'm a presenter with Carol on Welbing Radio. And also as the parent of a young man with special educational needs and disabilities who did, when he was 16 to 18, make use of post-16 S E N D transport from this authority. He is now 28.
Thank you, Dr Iain. Mr Sheehan?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As Mr Coxon said, there is a report on HS2 in the leader's position statement. To that point, I shall declare a personal prejudicial interest and retire to the public seating at the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, that won't last. The questions and replies sit out in... Question G, Mrs Hark?
But it's good to see that a cycling walking strategy alongside the public health's work is being proposed and I wondered if he would ensure that a paper is available for scrutiny when that arises. It seems pretty important to the two to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad this is back on. I couldn't shout. Thank you for the responses that have been given to question G. However, I am concerned that the response in particular to item D and E, the representations was made on behalf of the residents under a consultation process, has been misrepresented in the response. So I would like to raise in this chamber that the lead member rephrases the response and considers the tone and the language in the question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure whether that was a supplementary question, but I'm happy to stand by the response already given. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the site in question is a call for developers and landowners around that area to say whether or not their site could or could not accommodate development. The County Council, as it says in the reply, owns 62 hectares of land in and around that area. And all we've done so far is say to Blaby, 'Yes, we own land there, may or may not be suitable for development'. The main person I should be speaking to about anything that goes on in that area, Mr Bill, will not be you. It will be Mrs Wright from Blaby, who happens to represent that area and actually happens to sit on that council and be deputy leader of that council, that is calling for the sites, not a member from Hinkley-Bosworth, who has nothing to do with it whatsoever. And as you can see in the reply, I have promised plenty of local consultation and agreed meetings with Maggie Wright about anything that goes on in that area. And I am not offering the same facility to you, Mr Bill.
I am the Environment Spokesman, I have every right to comment here.
Thank you, Mr Bill.
To make a point of order, that spokespeople of each group are appointed by this council at the annual meeting. And Mr Bill is the Environment Spokesman and speaks for the opposition on environmental matters. And I would ask Mr Rushton to remember that.
Thank you. We're now going to receive position statements from members of the cabinet. So I would like, as the leader, to make his statement, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. One thing that isn't in my position statement, and I know it's not normal to congratulate a particular officer, but I think in this case mentioning Cheryl Davenport and the work she's done for this County Council and the accolade she's received is well worth a hearty congratulations. So I hope you'll grant me that bit of slack. On the appointments to local new MPs, I'm glad to see Nicky back. She's a good friend of this County Council. She's a personal friend of mine. I'm very, very happy that she's got the portfolio that she's got and in Cabinet of the Government. I'm also really heartened that Ed has been promoted. He's a good, hard-working MP, again from the Charmwood area. He's a good friend of this County Council. So I'm really pleased that Ed has been promoted. On the no-deal EU exit preparations, a fair bunch of members turned up before lunch. It was a very, very good presentation. I want to reassure members here that I'm, as the leader and lead member for Resilience, along with Byron, briefed weekly at least on the Brexit preparations. And it's nothing to do whether or not we're for or against Brexit. It's that whatever happens, this County Council will be prepared. You've seen today the significant costs which will be involved on a weekly basis of a no-deal Brexit. And again, as I said earlier on, I want to reassure you members and members of the public that this council will fund ameliorative measures, even if they are excessive, as we were informed earlier on, and then seek to get reimbursement from the government. You can see the funding that's been allocated so far, relatively generous in some areas, but we think that as a County Council, we haven't been particularly well-funded. But at least we've got something and we will deal with the consequences of a no-deal Brexit. Various members mentioned various roads and various outlines of whether or not trucks will be able to get in and out and all that sort of stuff in various areas within the county. But rest assured, we are here, we are a good highway authority, and as administration, we will put our money where our mouth is and do our absolute utmost to help people in the event of a no-deal Brexit. Local authority, unitary authority business case, doesn't take much more adding to. The business case is now presented, going to scrutiny, going to the cross-party committee, back to a cabinet in late October, back out to scrutiny, back to another cabinet in November, and as I promised everyone, the free vote in early December. But we do really need to take it to the early December and get a settled view of this County Council. So when the chiefs in London, various people like me are at various meetings in London, at least I know where we are. And it would be beneficial just to know exactly where we are moving forward. You all know my opinion, but we need to have a settled view on it in December. On climate change, I don't want to add too much to general wording except to say that, as you can see, so far it's expensive. We've spent £450,000 or budgeted for £450,000 already, but in my view, it is worth it. And if you see some of the speeches this last week in America, we've got to remember that we only have one planet and we've got to do our best to maintain it, not just for ourselves or our children or our children's children, but the generations beyond that. So I think whatever we do on climate change is well worth doing. We're taking forward, and it says here, ambitious projects will help us meet this commitment. The solar farm, 10 megawatts at Quorn will be fantastic. We've also got one of the first carbon-neutral industrial estates, again, something we're proud of. Doesn't come without cost, but if we show that we can do it, we hope that private sector developers will also do the same. We want to be carbon-neutral. We want to be carbon-neutral ahead of the government's target. So I think despite the cost, we have got to do something. But every time we take on another issue, we're not taking on more money. So it again tightens the purse strings on some of the other things that people are very sensitive to. Byron will talk a little bit more about money in general after myself. HS2, a lot of stuff in here. The main thing I think that we need, we need to ensure we get HS2. Otherwise, the East Midlands in particular and the North, going up through Sheffield and Leeds, will just be left behind if it only ever goes to Birmingham. And one of the things I think maybe that the government did do wrong when they called it HS2, what it is, it's new capacity built to a modern specification. It's not all just about speed. It's new capacity, new specification. I went down to London the other day on the train to the C C N. I paid £150 quid for my ticket, including parking and underground. And on the way back, on the half-four train, a half-four train, mind you, I had to stand. That is the problem we've got with the Mid and Main Line. At peak times, it's absolutely chock-full with people and because of the amount of trains they're running on, there's no capacity to put freight back on there. So if we can get HS2, new capacity, more capacity down the Main Line to put freight, and hopefully when I pay £150 to go on the train, I can at least get a seat on the way back. The thing I particularly welcome is the proposals put forward by Midlands Connect for a redesigned junction to the south of Totun that will allow trains from the Midland Main Line through Leicestershire to connect to the HS2 line. That is incredibly important for us people in Leicestershire because as you know, all we get it, and it's mainly through my electoral division, all it does is just race through. I don't think I'll ever go to Totun to catch a train down to London. I don't think I'll ever go to Birmingham to catch a train down to London. But the connectivity is of paramount importance. And there is, I met the Krill people the other day in Leicester City with the deputy mayor. There is possibly some potential with the HS2 people spending some money on the rails on the Ivanhoe line, that we might, might be able to do something in the future if they can prove the case of usage is the main thing. We know the capital costs are £150 million, but as everybody keeps telling them, they need to prove more usage. Government may well do something on the capital cost, but I'm advised that it's the ongoing subsidy that is the main problem. And if you're talking between £2 million and £4 million subsidy, that will be a deal breaker. And the government will probably subsidise it for the early years, but they certainly would subsidise it ongoing. So Krill need to prove better usage. They're doubting the ACOM figures from years ago. I say to them, 'Go ahead and see if you can prove the ACOM figures wrong'. And so far, Madam Chairman, they have actually collected him from every council along the line. I'm advised bar one. So they've got around £60,000. They've got £10,000 from all the upper tiers, which includes us, S P S in the city, Nottinghamshire and Derbyshire, plus five grand each from all the boroughs. So they're about there with their money. They've now got to decide what they want the consultants to look at, which will be difficult. So I'm hoping, say, in a year to 18 months, they'll come back with a new document that hopefully will show increased usage of the line, which they can then take forward. They fully understand that councils cannot afford to run them. You know, we can barely afford to deal with the S E N transport and all the other issues we've got. They fully understand that we're not in the business of running trains or subsidising trains, but we're certainly in the business of promoting trains. And if it ever did come along, I would certainly use it. I mean, I went to see Leicester Tottenham on Saturday. I'd have gone on it from Ashby rather than Drive. There'll be a station at the King Power. Moving on, World Suicide Prevention Day. Won't say much about this because I wasn't able to attend. Two of my cabinet members were able to attend and they will speak on it. What I can say is I'm really proud here as Leicestershire leader to have launched this campaign and see the support that it's managed to gather over the year 18 months that we've been doing it. Loughborough Town Deal, again fantastic that Loughborough have got this money. They are our biggest town, they are our biggest borough. And I promise, as it says in here, that if Jonathan and his team in Loughborough want to sit down with me and work out something that the County Council can help to do to spend the £25 million, I will sit down with him and see if a deal can be done to help redevelop Loughborough Town Centre. Loughborough Area of Innovation. Loughborough, obviously, our favourite university in the county because it's the only one that is in the full county, but it also happens to be the best one in the whole county. So I mean, great news there. Hopefully you've seen the stuff outside before we came in. And anything that we can do to help Loughborough University grow, especially Science Park and that sort of stuff, I'm super keen on doing. And then finally, I was only informed about Ashmoun Special School very early, very late on this morning, but I'm really proud that Ashfield, Ashmoun Special School has been highlighted for best practice in the 2019 Parliamentary Review. Again, I won't say a lot about it. I'm not as knowledgeable on it as Ivan, but I'm really proud that we've managed to get it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. Mr Gold?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank the leader for his statement and the opportunity to respond to some of the points raised. So on the no-deal Brexit preparations, obviously, you know, a lot of people hope that there is not a no-deal Brexit because it just, this report highlights some of the issues. this report highlights some of the issues, but on the specific issue of the money given by the government to the county council to prepare for that eventuality, you know, I have to question what formula gives Rutland Council a hundred and five thousand and this council only eighty-seven thousand, it just highlights the old issue of the way funding is handed out and the formula that's used. We have an airport, they have a railway station, and that's about it. It's just incredible, beggars belief how any civil servant or someone could have arrived at that as a fair distribution, but I understand he is taking that up, and I hope he has some success in that on a wider issue of funding. I thank him for setting out the timetable now clearly on the unitary status, I do think it's time we reached a conclusion on this, it has been going on a great deal of time, as he is aware, it's been spent at scrutiny, calling witnesses and talking, we're going to look at it again one more time, and then, you know, note that there will be a vote in this council chamber on the fourth of December, which will conclude the matter from the point of view of this council. So on climate change then, I did welcome the report that the cabinet considered a couple of weeks ago, and the confirmation in there that, I think, four hundred-odd thousand is being set aside for this, I suspect that won't be enough, but it's a good start, and I think the fact we are backing that notice of motion that came up in this council chamber with that funding is a good step in the right direction. Of course, young people still think we are not doing anything, our older generations are not doing anything like enough or taking this seriously, so we've got to prove to them, Madam Chairman, that we are, that we are intending to look at this, and that brings me to the point really, that there's got to be, whatever modified strategy or changes to the environment, there's got to be some real good engagement and public involvement, you know, I don't think the normal, oh, it's on the website if you want to comment, we'll cut it on this one, I actually think we need to set up some focus groups and actually have some young people come in and give their views on what they think about climate change and what they think the council, and understand the difficult decisions, because it was, Mr Rose, I think, said when we consider the notice of motion, that it will require a change in the way we provide services if we're actually going to go the whole way to meet these targets. And I do think some of the policies we currently pursue actually mitigate against climate change, Mr Bill referred to some earlier, so SEN transport and changes to school transport, not all brought about by the administration, I appreciate the national changes have factored into that, but that's led to more people on the road driving their children to school in the morning, and that doesn't help climate change, so we don't have a holistic, joined-up approach at the moment. And then just on HS2, the situation is, this review or put on hold that Grant Shapps has asked to be carried out, I just wonder where that leaves the considerable amount of resource that this council has put in to developing, and of course, that was to mitigate the impact and make sure we're joined up in the impact on our local road network, but I do recall that we're putting in four hundred thousand into that, we've seconded a senior officer to lead a team, and if this review, we don't know how long it's going to go on, I just wondered if, what thought had given, are we disbanding that, is it on hold, because of course we do have many other priorities that we need to focus on, so I don't know how long this is going to go on, but I am aware that we are actually incurring expenditure every day on that team. And then finally, I'll obviously share, welcome the success of the Loughborough Town Deal and the work that's been done on suicide prevention. Thank you, Chair.
Mr Kaufman?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the leader for a full report. Can I go to the paragraph, no-deal exit preparations? I came to this morning's meeting, which I found very useful, but our officers seem to be in a difficult position, because last night I went to a meeting of OBE and Wigan Council where the officers at the last minute had to completely withdraw, giving us a report, because they said in the interest of national security, government had told them not to go ahead, so what I learnt this morning was absolutely fresh, but so I'm not so sure whether you've broken national security regulations or whatever it is, but my concern is, have the council actually taken full legal advice on the plans that you're doing, because I'm sitting here thinking, we're aiding and abetting the Prime Minister, who's committed, who will be committing an unlawful act if he doesn't get an agreement, and I'm sitting here thinking, well, we may be aiding and abetting, so can I, I know fifty per cent of the lawyers are always wrong, it goes without saying, but I really do think we've got to clarify this fact, because I've never sat in a council chamber anywhere where we've actually discussed the preparations we have to make if somebody is doing something illegal, so I'd like confirmation that everything is right and we won't be surcharged or prosecuted or doing things like that for wasting lots of money, there seems to be lots of money coming from somewhere to do something if governments want to do it, and we're struggling with other things because they can't do it, so I wonder if I could have an assurance from the legal officers and from the leader that everything's above board, and with the thought of the Prime Minister may having his collar felt soon, I'd hate the leader of the council to have his collar felt, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kaufman. Dr Eynan?
Thank you, Chair, how do you follow that? Yes, but back to the main body of the leader's report, thank you, Chair, yes, I'm very pleased that we have some MPs in the new government, I do hope that in the next government we have some as well, that would be quite nice, wouldn't it? And I do hope that our concerns are going to be aired at the top table, not least concerns about the woefully inadequate sum being passed to us to deal with the self-inflicted wound of a no-deal Brexit, and that the financial risks to second-tier authorities from this are taken into account, because yes, the unitary business case, I think many of us may have some doubts about whether a major reorganisation is the best way to deal with one's problems, but then you have to look at Northampton and see that a business case for a rearrangement that suits us has got to be better than one that's imposed and in a rather ham-fisted way, so, and I think the other issues that clearly are of great importance and costly to us is climate change, it's a cost that if we don't bear it now, then we will lose the planet, so we have no choice in many ways, but this is, you know, and I'm really pleased, because obviously this was a motion brought to the council by the Labour Group and supported across the board, and that is absolutely marvellous, and I'm really pleased with that, and I think councillor Payne is such a champion for climate change, I'm pleased with that, but it's not just going to be about how we change our surfaces, you know, we are now cutting bus subsidies, at a time we should be telling people to sell their cars and get on a bus, we've got to think perhaps about strategic growth, is growth the right thing, when human beings are probably best seen as a cancer on the planet that needs to be excised, if you're a deep green, which I'm not. HS2, yes, fascinating change in the language, I remember councillor Rushton using the aphorism, aphorism, all pain and no gain, so it's quite nice that we've got a new one, which is new capacity to a new specification, that's quite nicely balanced, I'm not sure whether he believes in it, but I'm very pleased at the support that we are getting for the campaign to reopen the Ivanhoe Line, I'm probably of the view that some lower-level, more practical approaches to our rail problem would be more helpful across this county and particularly in North West Leicestershire. Well, Suicide Prevention Day, suicide is preventable, well, one would hope so, but sadly, suicide rates are now at the highest they have been since 2002, up eleven point eight per cent, we've got a nineteen-year high in the number of ten-to-twenty-four-year-olds who are committing suicide, three-quarters of suicides are men, I think someone put a notice on a railway station, and I think railways, it is a particularly terrible form of suicide, and they said, it said, suicide doesn't stop the pain, it just hands it on, we really have to work very hard on this, but I think we possibly ought to recognise that uncertainty, anxiety and austerity are not helping. So it's nice to come to Loughborough, gorgeous, Loughborough Town Deal, Loughborough University, my favourite, I was a GP there, so I'm very fond of Loughborough University, good that we're working with them, and Ashmount Special School, my son used to volunteer there, it is an excellent place, and councillor Rushton, I do hope he gets a chance, I hope he gets a chance to go, Chair, because they don't just, they're not just good in themselves, they are an enabler, they're enabling mainstream schools and embedded units to provide excellent special education needs and education for children with disabilities, teaching them closer to home, that in the long run has to be the solution to SEND transport, we shouldn't be exporting our children across the county, let alone out of the county, we should have excellence locally to home so that we can solve this problem for the long term. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr Eynan. Mr Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, could I come back to the no-deal exit, EU exit preparations, and similarly to my good friend Geoff, I've got concerns over this, we were told this morning that in the interests of national security or national embarrassment or something, we shouldn't be talking about this at all, but apparently, over the lunch break, that's been changed, and what we were told we couldn't talk about is all now in the report before us, and it talks about the East Midlands Airport and our concerns about that, and they are concerns we all share, but what it doesn't mention is the fact that, and it comes back to the point I was trying to make earlier, that Hinkley and Bosworth is impacted by the Thousand Acre proposals that are going on, and all the other proposals around the A5, which means that we are now the warehouse centre of the country. HGVs are heading for our neck of the woods in convoy, and they leave in convoy, and when this lot comes in, as presumably it will, we will have the problem of the tacometers, we'll have the problem of drivers who can't drive any further, we'll have the problems of drivers who stop, the drivers who park overnight, and it won't just be around the airport, it will be all along the A5 and up Ivon's area, and anywhere, which is anywhere close to the M69, A5, anything could happen, and I realise, I realise that the M6 and the M1 is somebody else's responsibility, but if anything goes wrong, and things do go wrong on a regular basis, it all piles into the area that Mr Brames, Melania and I and Amanda represent, and we would plead that some attention is given to the problems we face before we make it any worse. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bill. Mr Charlesworth?
Thank you, Chair, start with climate change, as Simon mentioned, four hundred thousand has been allocated going forward, woefully inadequate, much more money needs to be put into this literally burning issue, and as a member of this council, I as a member need to do more, and I want this council to do a lot more in terms of climate change. The young, as has been said, won't forgive us, and I believe we're close to a tipping point. You only have to look at the newspaper, media, it's worrying, not just to animals but the climate, and we need to do more, so, you know, I'd hope the leader would agree with me, I mean, I agree with the leader, HS2, now costing something like eighty-eight billion estimate, it was put as a vanity project and shouldn't have been. It is about capacity, and I agree with Mr Rushton on that, we need to increase capacity, but I believe we should do that on existing lines, increase capacity not just for passengers but for freight as well. Probably the only thing I agree with Boris Johnson on is HS2 disappearing, that is a waste of money and could be spent better elsewhere, so with that in mind, you know, I'd hope the leader would agree with me, to really address climate change, we scrap HS2, we scrap the unitary bid, and we scrap Brexit, all of them costing this, all of them costing this country and this authority and an inordinate amount of money which can be better spent on climate change, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Charlesworth. Mr Old?
Thank you, Chair, gives me great pleasure to draw members' attention to this document, the Parliamentary Review, which is headlined by Liz Truss, has messages from the Right Honourable, the Lord Blunkett and Lord Pickles, and inside is one of our local authority schools, not an academy, Ashmount School, which is praised to the hilt for the quality of the work that they deliver. This is a school that's increased to a hundred and seventy-one children on roll from ninety-two, has trained people in how to use the pupil premium throughout the East Midlands, and clearly is an absolute beacon of excellence, not only for itself but also for this authority. Now, there is one member present who I think will share with me that an outcome like this from when we first met back in nineteen ninety-eight, and we're sitting on the all-member panel that was put up to look at the future of special education, this is the sort of outcome we could have only dreamt about, but to know that we've got these area special schools, all graded outstanding, and to get an article like this, this is a quality report, it pays a huge tribute to the head teacher David Deacon, to the board of governors and the dedicated staff of the school, and I'd hope everybody in the chamber would join with me in sending our gratifications to the head teacher. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly, Mr Old. Mr Breckham?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Regarding World Suicide Prevention Day, one year on from the launch of the Starter Conversation campaign and website, the Suicide Prevention Conference was held at Leicester City Football Club on September the tenth to mark not only World Suicide Prevention Day but also the progress with the website and the wider campaign. The Starter Conversation Suicide Preventable Conference was opened by councillor Pendleton on behalf of the leader, it was extremely well-attended with over a hundred and forty people representing both local and national organisations, the speakers included those who had lost close family members to suicide and have lived since with its devastating effects. Can I thank the officers who organised this prestigious event on behalf of Leicestershire County Council? As the leader has said, it is clear that the campaign has made a real difference. Suicide awareness training for organisations is available through the Rural Communities Council, the resources we now have put in place are well-used, and the number of organisations involved with this campaign continues to grow. As we heard at this year's conference, as well as from testimonies when we launched the campaign last year, death by suicide touches so many lives, so the campaign will also be supporting people who have since been bereaved by suicide. This will be delivered through the launch of a local suicide bereavement service this October, again funded jointly by the county council, the city council and the police and crime commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Breckham. Mr Hunt?
Thank you, Chair, just I'd just like to add a few words to the excellent presentation that Ivan Old has just made, because Ashmount School is in my area, it's not in the favourite place in my area, as Peter and Jean Lewis will remember, but I'd like to add Peter and Jean Lewis to the accolade that Ivan has read for the excellence in that school, and also David Thomas, who was the previous head of that school, David Deacon relatively recent, but it is really warming, and all we need now is some excellent transport for the, for the early years and the later years. The leader referred to redesigning Loughborough Town Centre, I'm not quite sure if that's what he meant with the money that we hope to get, but certainly, I think most people like me would not like to see the town redesigned, we like the town centre as it is, but it's the access to the town centre particularly for families, we want to take your family, a young person taking families in, it costs a lot of money by bus, and we need some quick and free bus service, I think. I'm not going to mention the no-deal because I detected a great deal of embarrassment on my left here, despite the excellent humour coming from the liberal side, so moving away from your very good joke, Geoff, I just wanted to say about climate So, moving away from your very good joke, Geoff, I just wanted to say about climate change, the reason why I put my question down, which I admit was rather long and detailed about LTP3, is because we need strategies in the authority, not just to conduct matters that we directly control, but we can't, we can't project ourselves as the speakers for Leicestershire as a whole unless we address the whole of the county. And where we address the whole of the county is primarily within transport. It's our biggest consumer service, although it's delivered by partners. And that's why we need a strategy, a local transport policy strategy that is fit for the current age. And this year of all years has seen climate change race up the political agenda and yet is really a sort of poor relation in the LP2.3. So we need an LTP4, not just because it's a little bit outdated, language is old, but because it doesn't adequately address the climate change challenge that we currently have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Hunt. Mr Morgan, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'd just like to add my thanks as well for the leader mentioning Ashmount School. As previously been said, it's obviously now moved, but it used to be in my division until the amazing piece of work that was carried out by Peter and Jean Lewis, working with my good friend Ivan Old and many others here at County to facilitate the move to what is now a superb site. And anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to actually go around Ashmount, thoroughly recommended it, it's not only a fantastic building to work in for staff but actually also for the children that actually attend, really quite life-changing and life-affirming. And it retains not only a significant impact on special education needs across Leicestershire but also actually for a wider group because the training that it provides for teachers across schools across Leicestershire, I have to say, continues to be not only valued but also highly significant. In addition, I'd like to also mention, as the leader has, the £25 million grant that no doubt everyone will be attempting to spend every single penny off in Loughborough many times over. It is for the whole of Loughborough, it's not just for the town centre, and it will be focusing on four key areas, covering also infrastructure as far as transportation but also skills and culture and broadband. So I think those are areas that I know I look forward to working with Nick and many others across the area, particularly with Loughborough University because I think they are a catalyst for change, not only within Loughborough itself but also for the whole of Leicestershire and the East Midlands. And with that, I'd also like to mention the Sunday Times Review, which of course relisted Loughborough University as the fifth best university in Britain, in fact the fourth best in England. And if you exclude a couple of other significant ones, I personally think probably the best. So, Loughborough University, I have to say, I share with councillor Hunt as far as the campus is concerned. It gives me a huge amount of pride to represent the university here at County Hall but also to promote it to a wider community across the whole of the Midlands and also across the whole of Britain. It is a standout institution and I think everything we do to actually support them means that they will also support us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Morgan. And the last speaker is Mr Payne.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to speak to the climate change element of the leader's report because perhaps I have a little bit more information than the leader and it will save him the trouble of having to answer the various questions. I just wanted to make clear what our position is and our commitment. We have approved, I think it's more than 400,000, I think it's 440,000, and that managed to scope out what we should do. We currently have an environment strategy that takes us up to 2050 in line with the Paris Climate Agreement to become net carbon zero. We have actually accelerated that here in Leicestershire and for carbon emissions that we're responsible for, we're proposing to become net zero by 2030. That is going to take a lot of financial and resource commitment. It's also going to take a lot of behavioural change and we need some professional advice to be able to put these ideas together and then put it into a wider strategy. I think we've come a long way. You know, I've said about our street lighting programme, I've said about the solar panels on the property at County Hall, we've set aside millions of pounds to deal with ash dieback, but that's also for tree planting. As the leader's report says, since 2008/09, we have reduced our carbon emissions by over 60%, I think it's 67%, and our greenhouse gas emissions by 55%. That is commendable by any standard, but we've got some way to go. So, without misleading anybody, we have put some monies aside to work out essentially what we're going to do, how we're going to accelerate our programme. But, you know, I'll lay this down in council at the moment. When it comes to street lighting, which has contributed most of our carbon emission savings, when we have requests for our members, a wider community to put the street lights back on in huge areas, they must bear in mind that if we're serious about climate change, it's the climate emissions that those energies emit that is the real concern to us, not necessarily money. And it's for that reason that I am holding firm on our street lighting policy because that is a key element in keeping our carbon emissions obligations and aspirations to where we want to get to. Thank you.
Mr Rushton?
Thank you. Can I thank Blake for explaining where we are on climate change, that saves me going through it yet again. Can I thank Jonathan for his very positive comments on Loughborough Town Centre and that and promise that we will and do want to work with him and the university and on spending the £25 million, Jonathan. But we are ready and willing and able to work with a friendly local authority. Terry, thanks for your comments on suicide, thanks for your good comments about Ashmount, and I certainly agree with you about SEND provision. And that is our policy over the next coming years, is to build our own provision onto the existing schools and locally. So, A, you go to a school with a provision on the side so you can still mix with regular children, and B, it's cheaper because we provide it, and C, we don't have to transport people, as you say, all around the county and in some cases out of the county. One of the best examples of that apparently is Lincolnshire where they are ahead of the game of us, and that's why they're not having to spend the sort of money we're having to spend. We have allocated 30, 40 million of capital to get there, we're not there yet. Ivan's bringing a report to Cabinet in late October to say where we are, but you're absolutely right and that's what we should aspire to do. To Simon, on Brexit, Rutland got more because of unitary, stupid I know, but that's where they got it. North West Leicestershire did actually get quite a lot more early on in the year, which isn't listed here because they are a port authority. We've discussed the climate change which you mentioned, and then we get to Mr Kaufman. On Brexit, you were at the earlier meeting today, and we will publish, as Tom said, everything we humanly can so you can tell your residents what we're doing. And that includes the amount that it's going to cost us. On the principle of whether or not we're breaking the law, I think we're actually abiding by the existing law and by government dictat that we should seek to prepare for a no-deal Brexit. I agree with you entirely that a no-deal Brexit is the worst outcome, but it is an outcome. And at the moment, we've had three and a half years of no outcome whatsoever. So, I mean, I promise we'll do all we can, I've promised you the money to do all we can, but in my view, we must respect the outcome of the referendum. I voted remain. I lost the referendum and now we should blimey well leave. And that's what I think. And I think your policy is neither liberal nor democratic to completely ditch what the public, to, you don't go and have a referendum and then decide that you don't like the outcome and say, oh, well, we're going to stay. I think it's absolute, and the most appalling policy that any political party's come up with, have a referendum and then not respect the outcome of that referendum. I was remainer, I lost, I respect the referendum, and we should blimey well get on and leave as soon as we humanly can.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. We now move on to councillor Rhodes who will do his position statement. Thank you.
Well, Chairman, I hope the County Council will like what I've got to say, even if not a lot. We do have a little bit of good news on the financial side. As you, members all be aware, we've begun the process of rolling forward the medium-term financial strategy, which we always do at this time of the year. And we're doing this, this time against the background of the recent Chancellor's statement, which has announced that there's an increase in money for councils for the first time in 15 years. 4.3% increase in course spending power, that includes of course council tax, and he's posing that councils should increase council tax by somewhat. The increase, however, is skewed towards those authorities that have got some social care responsibilities, we do. And that's an early sign that they're looking in government to redress the balance between the cost of funding and that our fair funding campaign has been understood. The bad news, of course, is that the fair funding will not be implemented this year, it's going to be rolled forward another year as is business rates devolution. There is some positive news about special educational needs and disabilities, at least the education aspect of it. And that, of course, is funded through the high needs block of the direct schools grant, and there's more money coming into that. Now, whilst we've got all this information about the money available nationally, we don't know specifically what we're going to get here as a County Council. And that information won't become available until December. What we do know is for one year only. And the following year will be, well, there should be a lot more, but we don't know that yet. So we're having to work basically with just planning for one year ahead. There is a piece of bad news hidden in with it. The business rate pilot which we were awarded last year, and come on with some other business rates pilots around the country, but curiously not in London, has been taken away from us in its second year. So at the moment, we look as though we're going to lose £7 million. So that's a piece of bad news. And of course, there are continuing growing budget pressures, especially for children's services and adult social care and of course in special educational needs and disabilities. And in fact, that, that is the one area which is causing us now most concern. So, what we're doing is we will plan as much as we can plan until we get the detail, and we will certainly plan to resolve the problems in SEND, which we have to do. We will certainly prioritise key services and especially those that have been reported were the most concerns. We'll do it, of course, being informed by the recent consultation that has been completed on the 8th of September, and that's being analysed right now. We do have to also try to narrow the gap on the future developments fund. Now, I know Mr Galton, who seems to be asleep, has criticised this in the past because he thinks it's all about vanity projects. It's actually about the capital investment programme of this County Council. And of course, it's the 50-odd million pound gap in the, in the funding of that and our needs for investment into the future. So we'll try to narrow that gap if we can, and of course we'll continue with our programme of maximising efficiencies and income-earning opportunities. Now, Mr Bill was trying to ask me the question about the SEND transport, and I'll note what he says and it will be something which we'll look at with everything else. But as I say, I'm not anticipating that we'll get, we'll get some money, but I'm not anticipating that we'll get all the money we need to do all the things we would like to do. So, it's a good news, but it's not that much good news. And I hope that you will all join the, join in, of course, with the debate on this, which we shall be having as we develop the process. And of course, there'll be the scrutiny process after Christmas to go through. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Dr Inun, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank the leader for his report. I'm not entirely sure why he called it good news and a good deal. I'd go for better than it was, maybe. Yes. It is nice to see that it's getting the funding skewed towards authorities with social care responsibility. I'd like to hope, along with councillor Rhodes, that this does mean that our fairer funding argument is finally getting heard. As you know, this group has always supported fairer funding. It's a pity that the settlement's for one year only and what euphemistically calls the global economic situation and that I would call the self-inflicted Brexit wound is preventing us from planning anything. It's interesting that the business rate pilots will not continue for two-tier areas. Is that a hint that we're going to be bullied into unitary status whether we want it or not? And so that's an interesting one to think about, and perhaps we have been a little prescient there, which is good. Pleased to see that we are going to continue to try to balance our responsibilities to vulnerable people and to things that residents use on a day-to-day basis. And obviously, I'm very pleased that we're going to continue with infrastructure development. We've talked about SEND schools quite a lot, but also social care accommodation, which is something which we can invest in that will also hopefully save us money as an authority while providing adequate accommodation for people in need. Are the government listening? I think they're probably too busy firefighting at the moment. And, you know, I'm pleased that we're going to maximise efficiencies, but I think the reality is there are. If there were any low-hanging fruit, they fell down and rotted long ago, and that we have quite a job on to keep ourselves going with the small amount of improvement that we see in this report. But I thank the leader for it, all the same. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr Inun. Mr Malaney, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This authority continues to be one of the worst funded in the country, and we see the results of this with cutbacks to many vital local services, whether it's rural bus services under threat, shore start centres closing and other services being cut back. It's therefore with huge disappointment that we've seen, having been told for ages that we'd seen movement in terms of fair funding, that we were having a huge impact on the government, that we've seen the fair funding review delayed by another year, along with the business rates review until 2021, 2022. Our area desperately needs fairer funding as soon as possible, and the endless delays and halting to this process is really not helping at all. And so long as it carries on that we're one of the worst funded, then residents will continue to see cutbacks to vital services and big increases in council tax year in and year out. We need fair funding for Leicestershire and really we need to see more movement from the Conservative government and quicker on the issue.
Thank you, Mr Malaney. councillor Rhodes?
I'm encouraged by the two speeches. Dr Inun, I think, talks about business rates pilot disincentives being discontinued. Wonders a little bit about the question of unitary. I don't think there's any connection at all. I think this, basically, it's left hand not knowing what the right hands are doing in the civil service and the London Council's lobbying particularly well to keep their Mr Malaney, fancy, wonderful to agree with him, isn't it? And he's now, he's onside with fair funding and I'm delighted. So, thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. I'd now like to ask, I'd now like to ask Mrs Richardson, who's going to give us her position statement for equalities, community engagement and rural partnerships.
Thank you, Chair. I'm really pleased to be able to bring this report to council today on the work carried out by the County Council with and by Leicestershire communities. I have to say a very big thank you to all the staff involved in the policy, resilience, economic growth, communities and wellbeing teams. They do have They do have a can do attitude with everything that comes through and they do their utmost to help support communities in what they wish to achieve. We're trying through our work to create thriving Leicestershire communities where people, no matter who they are, can participate and take part and help each other. And we have an awful lot of talent and skills within our communities. So it is upon us to actually try and help them achieve that. We're able to help try to manage demand for services through prevention and early intervention. We're able to help design and deliver local services through working with organisations and volunteers. And I have to say a very big thank you to all our volunteers and volunteer organisations because there's some fantastic work being done out in the communities by them. I can't do justice to all the work in this position statement, but I do ask all members and indeed any residents watching to go to the website and to look at some of the initiatives and projects that have been supported because some of those may be able to be taken back into your areas and mirrored there. I'll just highlight a few of the things through the report mainly for those watching in. In 2018-19 we've supported by three hundred and sixty seven thousand five hundred and eighty eight pounds seventy eight community based projects around the county. We now have a partnership statement that sets out how we work with the voluntary sector to support them and to deliver continued improvements. We continue our work with parish and town councils. We're there to support neighbourhood plans. There are now a hundred and nineteen active neighbourhood planning groups. We've had thirty three adopted plans in sixty seven designated areas. The Rural Partnership is going from strength to strength. That brings together business, voluntary and public sector. And some of the initiatives that have been undertaken there include supporting smaller micro businesses, rural inclusion and skills programmes and improving the physical and digital connectivity. As mentioned previously, the Carolyn wellbeing radio has been an excellent initiative which takes the hospital radio out into the twenty first century. And obviously there are many things that can be put out on that radio to do with health, but they also have dementia friendly music etcetera. So it's helping in a number of areas. The Green Plaque, to date we've presented twenty three green plaques across the county. This celebrates the county's rich heritage and culture. And it's a scheme that invites the residents themselves to actually nominate people and places they think are worthy of the commemoration. And then there's the Leicester-Leicestershire and Rutland Resilience Partnership, which obviously goes into Nick's portfolio. But they're doing an awful lot of work for the authority, but with joint working across Leicester-Leicestershire and Rutland to be the emergency response first point of contact and also to support communities in dealing with anything that comes up as an emergency and also in the recovery. So thank you very much.
Thank you Mrs Richardson. Dr Einem.
Thank you Chair. It is always a pleasure to talk to such an excellent report. Councillor Richardson's portfolio is one of possibly the most enjoyable, being front facing for this council with our communities. And I agree with her in that we need as members to be well aware of what work is being done in our communities. And I would particularly like to mention Carolyn Wellbeing Radio, which as I said, I am a volunteer, so I have a personal but non pecuniary interest. And I would like to particularly thank John Sinott for the personal interest that he took in this project at the very beginning. Members of his staff, including Sabrina Malik, who worked as liaison with the wider community in getting the Ofcom bid through. Lauren Adello from the comms team has been an absolute star and all of the staff who have been helping to put forward the public service announcements that make this worthwhile. And I cannot fail to mention of course John and Jan Sketchley, who are the engine behind this entire project. If you haven't listened in, I do recommend you do. It's carolynradio.com and you can listen online or on fourteen seventy six AM. I'd also like to mention the Green Plaque award. Arthur Newbury Choice, absolutely brilliant event. It was absolutely delightful and one of his, a young man who actually was able to read some of Arthur Newbury Choice's poems. He was a World War One hero and very lovely. And I suppose I can't really finish on such a positive note. I'm going to have to mention the poor people of the Rutland and Leicestershire LRR resilience partnership. Poor things, having to deal with the no deal Brexit, but good on them for at least having a go.
Thank you Dr Einem. Mr Rushton.
Thank you Chairman. Louise asked if the report could be appended to the document. The report is thirty odd pages long, so what we're going to do, Moa's undertaken, as soon as the county council meeting is over, you'll be emailed the link, so you've got the full report and I hope that satisfies Louise. Can I just thank Louise for the work she does? I thought the expression you just used, enjoyable and front facing is a good expression. Pam did a good job of this because she took over Pam's portfolio and I'm happy to say Louise has done an equally good job as Pam does, did. Sometimes under the radar, but she certainly gets the job done and I think she certainly enjoys it. Can I just mention two or three which I'm particularly proud that she does? Shaw community grants have always, always been popular in this county council and I've been there since nineteen eighty nine with a small break, but they've been popular ever ever since and it would be our intention to keep them as long as we humanly can. The Rural Partnership again is an excellent initiative and I'm pleased we still do that. Again with you Terry, I know you're closely involved with Carillion Radio along with John Sketchley and of course your husband, not your husband, your partner John at the back. So I'm pleased that we've been able to help you. And as you know, I've been down there to try and help and I know the chief's done quite a lot of work to help you with the maths etcetera. So thank you for acknowledging the work we've done to help you. And finally the Green Plaque, it was one of my initiatives for a number of years ago. It still remains popular and as long as we get people wanting green plaques, we'll continue to do it. It is a relatively low cost for what we do. It does cost us money. So I'll say as long as we get people wanting green plaques up and people certainly appreciate them when they're put up and we get a damn good turnout when they go up, we'll continue to do it. So thank you Louise for the work you do and whenever you want to bring a report like this to full council, I think you should. Thank you Louise.
Do you know the speakers? Mrs Richardson, did you want to? Thank you. Mr Rushton is right, it was one of the happiest portfolios and enjoyable I've had since I've worked for this council. I loved every second of it. And it was a pleasure on Sunday to attend an event in Switland where a group of ladies were celebrating their thirtieth anniversary of providing counselling for women who've been sexually abused. And they asked me to pass back to Louise's department their grateful thanks for the help and the support that the county council, which is her department, have given them. And that's not just financial. And it was lovely for me as chairman to go to an event and receive that sort of accolade for the county council. We now consider the Cabinet Scrutiny Commission and other bodies. Mr Rushton.
Item six A, the plan sets out the key principles to guide the future extraction of minerals and the form of waste management development in the county to the end of twenty thirty one. The plan seeks to balance two competing pressures to protect the environment and the amenity of local residents whilst ensuring a steady supply of minerals and the provision of waste management facilities in accordance with the government policy and society's needs. The development management policies which are contained in the plan set out criteria against which planning applications for minerals and waste development would be considered by the Development Control and Regulatory Board. It's also pleasing to note that the inspectors have found the plan to be sound and in planning terms, if you're not sound, you're dead. So it's all good and I therefore move the recommendations set out on the green order paper. Madam Chairman.
Happy to second that Madam Chairman. And in so doing, just bear in mind that Leicestershire provides most of the southern half of the country's minerals in all sorts of geysers. And it's quite superb when you begin to think of GBPLC and what it may have to do shortly. This is a most important report. If I could refer members to page twenty nine of the non technical summary. It's absolutely superb in that it's right up to date, it's demand led, but of course as the leader's already said, just because we've taken it to the inspectorate, they always find little bits and bobs to say. And on MM three in particular, nice to see, it's bang up to date. It's to ensure conformity with the February twenty nineteen NPPF. They've asked us to look at MM three, policy M ten as well. So really happy to report and support this Chairman.
Thank you Mr Pendleton. Mr Hearn.
Just to say on behalf of the Labour Group per Chair, we're supporting this. It's taken a long time to go through. It is the material actually that reminds me of David Jennings because he was so close to planning and he will not be forgotten in this authority, I'm sure. We did have a big concern about fracking, we retain that concern about fracking and we've been assured by officers that there will be very, very unlikely to see any fracking in the authority. But apart from that, essentially we have these documents and we support it. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Hearn. Mr Kaufman please.
Thank you Chair. I didn't find this the easiest read. I will be supporting it, but just I didn't find it the easiest read. I just wonder if somebody could help me on page one six four. I have to look at the pictures, there's a map on one six four. And I'm surprised my friend David hasn't brought this one up. It appears that there's a railway missing. The railway link between Leicester, Coalville and Ashby, which is solely used for mineral, which some of us have been fighting for years to get passenger services. So if it's completely disappeared from this map, I'm a bit concerned. That's all Chair.
Thank you Mr Kaufman. Mr Balter.
Thank you. It's Bill. Mr Balter she said.
Thank you Chair. Actually Mr Bill did indicate to speak before me, but
Can I just
Well I was going to second the amendment, so that means I can't speak either.
Mr Orson, I believe you've got something to say.
Seven, three eight one. It starts shale grass extraction and it mentions the British Geological Survey some years ago now on the Boland Basin. I do own land within that basin, so I think it's best if I declare a personal and pecuniary interest and walk out.
Thank you Mr Orson. Right, Mr Crook.
Thank you Madam Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions actually. Page one six eight shows a site off Kirby Lane between New Bow Verdun and Kirby Mallory, which I understood from tarmac, from recent tests that they'd carried out was no longer viable, but I notice it's included in the map. And basically the question is, is it because of the shortfall that we are reporting in this item? Has it come back on or is that a mistake? That's my first question. Second one, which is a bit more longer than that, but it's to do with tree planting, which is on, where are we? Page one four seven. And I note that the leader spoke about this in his report, but it says in the report on one four seven that the majority of the tree planting is going to be on reclamation sites and where they've mined for minerals. But given the fact that it also says that we've got half the tree cover in Leicestershire, that the rest of the country, which is eight percent, we're four percent, is there any more detail on that? Is there anything other than basically we're going to plant up on mineral sites and that? It might be a question that needs answering at a later date, but you know, I would appreciate it if we could.
Madam Chairman, if it's helped Mr Crooks, these matters of detail, we'll write to him because I obviously don't know the answer on the hoof, but we'll write to you with the answers.
Right, there are no more speakers, so we'll now go to the amendment. Mr Bill.
Chairman, I wish to move the amendment in my name that's on the green order paper. It has surprised me actually just how quietly this whole question is being addressed this afternoon. I don't think there's many people here who can remember, but in former years, there was a massive debate on the extractive industries of this county and the impact this had on communities. Sand and gravel in the south, granite in the north west, coal in the north west. And there was a massive row that went on in this chamber between the adherents of the coal industry of Coalville, who could see that their industry was dying and their ambition to move over to Melton Mowbray and build mining in Melton Mowbray and in the Vale of Beaver. Extraordinary scenes took place inside this chamber and outside, but now we're quietly, we are quietly agreeing this plan. So whether that's moved on or people have just lost interest, I don't know. But I can recall when I started really, we used to talk about protecting the countryside when we looked at quarries and so on. That then moved on to the posher name of protecting the environment and we formed the Environment Committee up here. Then we
Mr Bill, is that the amendment that you
It is the amendment, Madam Chairman. I'm trying to give some background which is of a non political nature, which you know, I know that comes as a bit of a surprise, but I'm just trying to describe what happened. Then we started talking about sustainability and then sustainability was all wrapped up in the NPPF. And we are told really that we don't need to talk about climate change because the NPPF will take care of it. But any of us who have had any experience of planning will know that the whole aim of the so called NPPF is to encourage development. Anybody wishing to put in an objection will always be told
Mr Bill, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you just move the amendment please?
Point of order. Mr Bill is doing nothing wrong here.
But he's not speaking to the amendment. I realise Madam Chairman that it is unusual for people to actually speak from this side of the chamber with any depth because we are discouraged from doing so, but I will move the amendment. I think there is now a requirement upon us to actually acknowledge the fact that climate change has to come into every consideration from now on. And therefore, as you are asking me to move to that, I shall ask that. And then I do urge everybody here, not just to move fancy motions supporting climate change, but to implement it into all our decision making. Thank you Madam Chairman. also on the climate change as well. The document mentions the vast amount of minerals we're going to extract from the county over the next few years. It doesn't really address the method in which they're going to be moved around the country. Now, it is our feeling that the railways are the best way to move these large quantities of minerals. There's little reference to that in the document. If we're going to improve the environment, we need to cut down the number of lorry movements and everything else. I'd have thought that would have appeared somewhere in the document, ways of transporting these materials in a more climate-friendly way. There's no reference to that at all. There is an opportunity for the lead member to mention, to do some input into this on the section B. It's through A, B and C, the lead member could make some reference to this, and that would be helpful. Also, we can talk forever about the minerals, but the document is the document. If we move on to waste, there's very little reference to the reuse of waste, there's just one small paragraph. Now, I've been harping on about this for, as the Chair of the Environment Committee will mention, I've known for some time, about reuse of materials. Done quite a lot of talking about reused materials, especially at bring sites. There's very little action. Now, Mr Payne, who's been at the meetings, hears what has been said, and I urge him this afternoon to give some commitment to reuse of materials at these sites. It's upon us to actually not waste the earth's resources, but use them in the most economic way to get things done. And this is an opportunity for the Conservative group to actually show their commitment to the environment and climate change, to back climate change emergency. This is the first opportunity, in fact, to actually put it into action. So I urge them to do something this afternoon to support our motion, which I very much doubt they will. If they don't do that, at least Mr Payne has got the opportunity to make some reference to that. If he refuses to do so, I question his commitment to climate change.
Thank you, Mr Balter. Dr Irons.
Thank you, Chair. It's probably not the most well-written motion I've ever seen. Neither, I'm afraid, has it been the most well-presented motion I have ever seen by the Liberal Democrat team, so I'm sorry. But for clarity, this amendment doesn't actually change one jot of the minerals and waste plan, which is probably a good thing, because these things take years to get through. What it actually is saying is something that's actually already said in the plan, it's just not said in quite the same politically exciting, media-friendly way that perhaps we need at this juncture. Because if you look at, say, for example, page eighty-four, it's talking about coal. Permission should not be given for the extraction of coal unless the proposal is environmentally acceptable. What is environmentally acceptable? That has clearly changed, it's in its emphasis. It is very clear throughout this document that whatever we do has to be now environmentally acceptable. Neither does this motion actually change the agreed stance of this council. Because I've sat in the scrutiny commission, I have spoken with councillor Payne, it is very clear that we are already saying, we want to have climate change impact statements on every policy that goes through this council, and therefore every plan that goes through this council. Now, I can understand why, when it's kind of not possibly the best presented motion that the colleagues to my right might want to fall into the trap of voting against it. I hope they don't, because it doesn't actually say anything that we don't already agree with, that we want to have climate change impact statements used routinely throughout the work of this council going forward, and that is something that we all voted for back on the fifteenth of May by implication in what we did. So I think our group will be voting for this amendment, because it just says what we're already doing.
Thank you, Dr Irons. Mr Payne.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just for the record, I'm not the lead member in this area. It happened to go to the Environment and Transport, Overview and Scrutiny Committee, which I was present at, but I certainly do not take responsibility for putting this very good piece of work through full council today, that is the leader. Secondly, I cannot relate to what Mr Balter was talking about. In fact, I'm not sure what he was on about, frankly. I do follow what Mrs Irons was on about, given the fact that, my understanding is that these plans are very prescriptive, they have to fulfil a framework largely set out by planning regulations at national level, and plans can only be found sound or unsound. And for us to have a sound plan, which is our best protection for unfettered development and therefore contributions towards nasty greenhouse gas emissions and climate change issues, I think we should support the plan as it is. But for the life of me, I can't understand what Mr Balter was going on about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Payne. Mr Welsh.
Firstly, I'd like to apologise with the haste, perhaps, in which we had to put the amendment together following a group meeting. The discussions arose within the group, looking at this document and reflecting upon how these strategies have implications for climate change. And we reflected very much on the comments the lead group have made about the support for making sure that we handle everything in terms of minimising our effect on climate change. The idea of bringing the amendment in was to start the conversation about formalising our approach to, it may not be within the main document, but certainly within the executive summary, that explains how this is consistent or not consistent with climate change. And it's to start that discussion, because I think we're going to have to do that in all major strategy documents that we bring forward. And it's an opportunity to discuss taking that on board now and starting to do it. Now, it doesn't mean we're going to change the document, it doesn't make any difference to that at all, we're going to support it anyway, but I do think that we should start to make the transfer of the way we approach climate change by starting to embed that type of summary thing within it.
Thank you, Mr Welsh. There are no more speakers. Oh, sorry, Mr Shepherd, I missed you.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr Irons presented an excellent argument as to why this amendment is actually of no use, but then I thought rather spoilt the effect by concluding that she was advising, voting for it. It's been made clear that this amendment would add, I think Dr Irons said, absolutely nothing to what we're doing. And if we allow ourselves the sort of self-indulgence of every council meeting from now on, adding some amendment to things, saying, we're doing it, but let's say so again, it becomes in the end a little bit, I think, silly. So actually, I agree with Dr Irons up to about the last, I think, minute or two of her speech, that really there is no point in this amendment. We're committed, you've said that, let's just get on with it and do it.
Thank you, Mr Shepherd. You are the last speaker. Mr Rush, you do have the right of reply before the amendment is put, if you wish to.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I thank David Bill for the reminiscences of forty years ago, despite being cut short. Mr Bill, you have been advised that the County Council already requires officers to consider environmental implications which include climate change authors. Climate change authors are regularly reminded of the need to ensure proposed project schemes should aim to support the council's environmental and climate change policies. In our view, we don't need, along the lines of what Richard has said, we don't need another amendment. The overarching policy of this council is our climate change motion, so all matters will be considered, bearing that in mind. I also agree with Terry. I thought she was absolutely perfect in her rebuttal of your amendment, right up until the last sentence, when she said, but we're going to support it. I hope you reconsider, Terry, because I thought you were right, as Richard said, up until the last sentence. Mr Balter, I don't really like being lectured on our green credentials by yourself. We were one of the earliest county councils in the country to pass a climate change motion at this full council. We were happy to support it, and I don't think it does you any good in seeking to lecture us on our green credentials. Mind you, having said that, you questioned the bit of the motion under little B, that the chief executive be authorised, following consultation with the lead member, who happens to be me for this for some reason or another, to make necessary additional modifications that do not materially affect the plan policies in accordance with blah blah blah. I will undertake to speak with the chief about transporty sort of things and see if we can accommodate something on that, because on that particular matter, you might have a point. But we on this side will be opposing the amendment on the basis that the motion is satisfactory as is, and the work we're already doing on climate change and the policies that are affected by the overarching policy of this County Council have a material effect on its outcome. So I'm afraid, Mr Bill, despite your history lesson, we're going to oppose it.
Thank you. We can now put the amendment... Thank you, Mr Bill. So, members, this is the vote on the amendment put by Mr Bill. Going to read your names and ask you please to indicate whether you're voting for or against the amended motion. Mr Barclay.
Against.
Mr Bedford.
Against.
Mr Bentley.
No.
Mr Bill.
No.
Mr Blunt.
No.
Mr Balter.
No.
Mr Bray.
No.
Mr Brecken.
No.
Dr Bremner.
No.
Mrs Broadley.
No.
Mr Charlesworth.
No.
Mr Coxon.
No.
Mr Crooks.
No.
Dr Irons.
No.
Dr Feltham.
Against.
Mrs Fryer.
Against.
Mr Galton.
No.
Mr Gamble.
No.
Mr Gillard.
Against.
Mrs Hack.
No.
Mr Harrison.
Against.
Dr Hill.
No.
Mr Hunt.
No.
Mr Kaufman.
No.
Mr Licarish.
No.
Mr Mia.
No.
Mr Morgan.
Against.
Mr Mulaney.
No.
Mrs Newton.
No.
Mr O'Shea.
Against.
Mr Orson.
No.
Mr Osborne.
No.
Mr Old.
Against.
Mrs Page.
No.
Mr Payne.
No.
Mr Parton.
No.
Mr Pearson.
No.
Mr Pendleton.
No.
Mr Poland.
No.
Mrs Posnett.
No.
Mrs Radford.
No.
Mr Rhodes.
No.
Mrs Richards.
No.
Mr Richardson.
No.
Mrs Rushton.
No.
Mrs Seton.
No.
Mr Sheehan.
No.
Mr Shepherd.
No.
Mrs Taylor.
No.
Mr Welsh.
No.
Mrs Wright.
No.
Mrs A. Wright, I'm sorry.
Against.
Mrs M. Wright.
No.
And Mr Wyatt. Thank you. Nineteen, nineteen-four. Two, four, six, seven, ten, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-two, thirty-one, nineteen-thirty-one. Thank you, members. There are nineteen members for, and the amendment is lost. We now move back to speak on the original motion. Mr Rushton, you can speak on it.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and I seek to reassure this council that despite voting against that amendment, we have a climate change emergency policy, and every single document that we consider has environmental impacts assessed before we bring it here, and certainly before we vote on it. I don't suppose that will make any difference to Mr Bill, who will put a load of drivel in some focus leaflet, but I'd like to make the principle, the principle is assured that everything is considered in that context. Point of order. Don't ask me the standing order, but I'm finding it rather offensive this afternoon that members are being named and...
I'm sorry, Mr Kaufman, you have to sit down. We're now to vote. Right, we're now at a stage where we vote on the motion. So, all in favour? Against? That's carried. Thank you. We now move on to the local code of corporate governance. Mr Rushton.
Madam Chairman, agenda item six B, local code of corporate governance. The local code of corporate governance is an important document. Through it, we ensure the council does the right thing in the right way. As the code says, good governance invariably leads to high standards of management, strong performance, effective use of resources, which in turn lead to better outcomes for the communities we serve. I therefore move the motion on the green order paper.
I'm happy to second that proposal, and it's a very clear paper. It outlines the seven core principles and how we achieve good governance, and behind, on the pages one-hundred-and-ninety-three to two-hundred-and-eight, it goes through in great detail of how each of those core principles is applied and makes this council well-governed as it is.
Thank you, Mr Barclay. Mr Sheehan.
Yes, just like to pick up a few points here. Certainly welcome the revised local code of corporate governance. On page one-nine-five, we've got a commitment on modern slavery and human trafficking. As we know, these are terrible abuses of human lives. Modern slavery can crop up in any supply chain, and human trafficking can occur in any settlement. We must do our bit to prevent these occurring. Page two-hundred, I look forward to hearing more about the new growth unit. Public services and infrastructure should go hand in hand with growth, and hopefully the growth plan will not let us forget that. Page two-oh-three, member reports are a vital part of democratic accountability, and I see no reason why we shouldn't all complete one.
Mr Rushton, would you wish to reply?
Sure, Madam Chairman. Obviously, human trafficking is something which is abhorrent throughout the world and something which we on this side, and I presume everybody here is opposed to. On growth, I agree with you entirely. We can't have growth without infrastructure, so again, I agree with you. And on the member reports, I'm advised that nearly everybody... performance, effective use of resources, which in turn lead to better outcomes for the communities we serve. I therefore move the motion on the Green Order Paper.
I'm happy to second that proposal, and it's a very clear paper. It outlines the seven core principles and how we achieve good governance, and behind, on the pages one hundred and ninety-three to two hundred and eight, it goes through in great detail of how each of those core principles is applied and makes this council well governed as it is.
Thank you, Mr Barclay. Mr Sheehan?
Yes, just like to pick up a few points here. Certainly welcome the revised Local Code of Corporate Governance. On page one nine five, we've got a commitment on modern slavery and human trafficking. As we know, these are terrible abuses of human lives. Modern slavery can crop up in any supply chain, and human trafficking can occur in any settlement. We must do our bit to prevent these occurring. Page two hundred, I look forward to hearing more about the new growth unit. Public services and infrastructure should go hand in hand with growth, and hopefully the growth plan will not let us forget that. Page two oh three, member reports are a vital part of democratic accountability, and I see no reason why we shouldn't all complete one.
Mr Rushton, would you wish to reply?
Sure, Madam Chairman. Obviously, human trafficking is something which is abhorrent throughout the world and something which we on this side, and I presume everybody here is opposed to. On growth, I agree with you entirely. We can't have growth without infrastructure, so again, I agree with you. And on the member reports, I'm advised that nearly everybody on this county council has submitted a member report, apart from a few recalcitrant liberals.
Thank you, Mr...
Adam Chairman.
Mr Bill, please sit down, I was speaking. Mr Bill, can you please sit down, I was speaking. Thank you. We don't have to take a vote on this, it's just a report to note. I would like to thank the people for all the hard work that we've put into this. We want to vote, okay? We've changed the minds. Right then, we need to vote on it. So can we have all those in favour? Thank you very much, that is passed, thank you. Report of the Constitution Committee. Mr Rushton to speak on it with the approval of the Secondar. Mr Rushton.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I move the motion on the Green Order Paper, which includes a couple of minor amendments which I consulted with my scrutiny commissioners, I consulted with Simon as the leader of the opposition, and consulted with Terry. Thank you.
Seconded, seconded, Chairman.
Mr Sheehan?
A bit minor wings here. I note we can certainly further raising of the bar on petitions, but we know we get the message petitions are not wanted at scrutiny because there's no money to actually respond to them, all of which shows that austerity is not only damaging services, it's damaging democracy. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a point of clarification, actually, and it's to do with petitions. I'm a bit puzzled on the writing on this. It talks about one thousand signatures from two or more electoral divisions. Two or three villages in my area could get two thousand signatures out of one, but not over other electoral divisions. So I'm a bit puzzled on that, and I'd like a bit clearer response on what it's actually saying, because that is really worrying.
Yes, Chair, could I please seek advice from the officers on exactly what we're voting on? There are in fact two parts to this. There's motion one, which deals with matters related to Rule 2A, of which we have no problem. And then over the page, there is motion two, procedural motion in accordance with Standing Order thirty-seven. Now, several members have made reference to the change of rules in petitions, and that's what I want to speak about, and I'll just seek clarification on whether this is being taken as a whole or whether it needs to be taken separately. Could you advise on that?
I actually made mistakes, Simon, you're right. Motion two should be the second one, because we have to defer it, as far as I'm aware, to the next full council. So I've moved...
We are only dealing with motion one at the moment, is that right?
Yes, Simon, sorry.
And then we can talk about motion two shortly. That's fine, thank you.
Chairman, on the petitions, and Shaun has raised it, and so has Mr Crook, sorry. The problem with petitions, and I think it was Max who raised it originally, that sometimes the Environment Transport Overview and Scrutiny Committee was entirely bogged down by the amount of petitions getting to scrutiny. So you with a couple of small villages, it doesn't mean this petition is less valid, it just means it doesn't have to go to the Environment and Scrutiny Committee. You can still take it up with the lead member, you can still present it to the chief officer. It's just that, I think it was Max was one of them, felt that the Environment Transport Scrutiny Committee was bogged down with petitions and couldn't deal with other business, is why, I think.
Thank you, Chair, yes. I have absolutely no problems with motion one. Motion two, the petitions, there is a concern, I think, that, and this was expressed by councillor Max Hunt, that petitions may not be the best way to get some of the things done that the public needs to be done. One of the risks of moving to a thousand signatures, well, one of the risks is actually you'll get two thousand and three thousand, it's very easy to get signatures now, all change.org.uk or whichever petition site you want to use, whether or not they're irrelevant signatures is part of the issue. The other, the real serious issue for me, though, is the way that petitions potentially bypass genuine political engagement with your local member. And so I am pleased that we are going to see now, when a group of residents put a petition to this council, if it doesn't hit the thousand threshold, they will get proper local engagement with their local member, the lead member and the director, because this is where people need to be heard. And what I would hope is that also going forward, this council promotes the other methods of getting your voice heard. We have many opportunities at this council for residents to come and ask questions. Very rarely do, though we have and encourage. The original climate change protesters brought a question to Environment and Scrutiny, and this is part of what started the process here of us having a climate change motion. We also have members who are able to bring a question, as I brought a question to Environment and Transport, which then has led to the motion that we're going to have soon from the Close the Loop campaign. There are other ways through, and I do hope we can start promoting some of the less well-used methods of getting real engagement with our public, because there is a risk that this will be seen as us cutting off from the public who vote for us, hopefully, and pay our wages.
Thank you, Dr Einan. Mr Galton?
Yes, thank you, Chair, this was the matter I wanted to speak on. Like Dr Einan, welcome for petitions that don't go to scrutiny, that there's an opportunity now, under this proposal, for the local member to meet with the director to consider the response. But in our group, when we discussed this, we felt moving from a position of five hundred signatures to get it committed to a thousand is going too far, is too higher threshold. And the point was made, and is being made, that's going to make it particularly difficult in a village or a smaller community, maybe in a town, where it crosses two, three, maybe even four divisions, that will be easier. But where you've got one division in the centre, you go to petition from a community, it'd be impossible to get two, for it to affect two electoral divisions if it's a genuine local concern. So that was the first issue, making it about two divisions. And then secondly, as I say, this threshold is quite high. And, you know, I want to make the point that, you know, we got rid of highway forums, and that's where these were dealt with, and would have been better, many of them had better dealt with there, and that would have addressed Max's concern about so-called clogging up the committee. So that's the first point. The second point is that throughout this debate about the unitary status of the benefits, we've banged on and on about having a more open, responsive, a council that takes decisions at a local level, that engages with the public more, we're going to set up all these area committees, give them budgets, powers, and so on and so forth. At the first opportunity, review the Constitution, we're actually making it here more difficult for the public to engage with the council. It just seems we're going in the opposite direction of the one we say, well, if you make us a union authority, we'll be much more local and responsive to local needs. This is sending the wrong signal, Madam Chairman, completely the wrong message, by saying to people, you'll have to get a thousand signatures to get it in front of elected members. That's the issue, it's the matter of the way the public can get something in front of elected members, and we're losing sight of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Mr Hunt?
Thank you, Chair. Well, since my name was mentioned in this, I thought I ought to say something. The first thing I want to say is that when discussing this with officers, officers have assured me on every occasion that whether you have your petition before the scrutiny committee or directly from the director, that it is the same report, the same amount of work, the same amount of expertise, probably the same number of pages goes into that report. So if I represent a small village, I would want my petition to go to the county council as soon as possible and to get the best possible report. Best way of doing that is to submit two or three hundred signatures with a good argument on it, you've done a homework, put it into the director, and you get the response back. Now, if that response is not adequate for you, and actually, very often isn't, because public pressure always trumps the arguments that seem to come from the department, because we're looking at a different basis, aren't we, what we need against the general policy. So if that isn't good enough, you can ask your lead member, your, sorry, your county councillor, to bring a question to the committee. And you can turn up, and you can turn up with placards, and I'm sure, certainly in my committee, who under the excellent chairmanship of Mr Pearson, the public will probably be allowed a right to actually say something. But you are saying something in response to a proper document that had come from the director. Now, that's the best way I can think of of processing a petition. You can, on the other hand, wait two or three months for it to come to the committee, you're presenting it in front of a dozen members, all fidgeting, waiting to get on to the real business there to discuss, who have nothing to offer generally on, you know, the traffic lights at Temple Junction, they really don't. And in fact, it's very rarely that we have anything of substance that we can offer in help. So that's the longer route, you present it to a committee. And then you've got the reports to go back to and think about, well, what do we do next? Of course, you've shot your fox, you've done all you can, it's gone to committee once. But at least, you know, under the direct presentation to directors, you've got a second chance of going to committee. So I think this actually came up because we had a very long meeting discussing matters like clean air, waste recycling, and why we weren't meeting targets. And we wanted to spend some time on that, but by the time the petitions were through, I think it was about three o'clock, and you know, people were beginning to peel off, not myself obviously, nor Bill, nor Mr Bill. But they're the kinds of problems that we've got, and I hope members will be cognizant of that.
Thank you, Mr Hunt. Mr Kaufman?
Thank you, Chair. There are sometimes unintended outcomes. I think we brought this on ourselves when the county council did away with highway forums. It may have saved a bit of money, but it took us, it actually shot yourself in the foot with regards to your arguments for unitary doing that, because not only have you taken away the highway forums, you're now proposing to make it more difficult to residents to bring in petitions that go to the scrutiny committee. And I just wondered, if I understand this correctly, in Odeby, if we had a thousand signatures in the hold of Odeby, which happens to be a double-member division, I suppose that wouldn't count, would it? Or would a double-member division count as two divisions? Because I could bring something on behalf of residents, a petition, take it in, it's got a thousand signatures, but I don't think it would count. Perhaps I can have an explanation, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Kaufman. Mrs Radford?
Thank you, Chair. What a load of waffle from that side, anyway. I'll try not to waffle. I've just put a petition into the director, less than three hundred, got a reply back, and the petition's been upheld, because it was for a no left turn, and the directors agreed with the petitioners. I didn't go out round the whole of Shepp shed, it only involved a certain part of Shepp shed. I could have got the whole of Shepp shed to petition, but it was irrelevant. But I'm quite happy with how it came about. I got an answer back within two, three weeks, and, you know, it's all been sorted.
Thank you, Mrs Radford. Yeah, Mrs Haslam wishes to say something.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to come back to a point raised earlier about the motions. The second motion is purely procedural. To enable the first motion to be given effect, to become effective, requires the second motion to be made, so I hope that might be helpful, just to clarify that. So really, they both need to be taken together.
Mr Rushton?
Only briefly, Chair, can I say I wholeheartedly agree with Max's explanation. I think it was well spoken and concise, and I endorse it. I also endorse what Christine Radford said, so I have no hesitation in moving the motion. With regards to two-seat divisions, two-seat divisions, as far as I'm concerned, will count as two divisions. So if you're in a two-seat division, you've already got two seats, so you won't need to have two seats plus a one seat, or two seats plus a two-seat, you'll manage with your own two-seat division. I mean, we've got the same problem in Kirby-Muxley, so Richard and Lee will not need to consult whoever it is next door to sign their petition.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. We're now going to vote on, now we are voting on both motions, to enable the second motion to come back to the next council. So, all in favour? That's thirty-one in favour, twelve against, so the motion's carried. Agenda item number eight, Mr Rushton... Oh, and before Mr Rushton speaks, can I just say there is no vote in this one.
Madam Chairman, as you can see, I'm appointing Trevor Pendleton as a full member of the Cabinet. Trevor will support me in the growth planning and infrastructure policy areas, including chairing the Member Advisory Group on Planning and taking the lead on the Strategic Growth Plan, Section 106 Agreements and Superfast Broadband. Trevor will also support me on the Midlands Engine and Midlands Connect, and will represent the county council when he joins the Midlands Engine delegation to Sesh One. It'll be really, really useful to have Trevor to be able to speak at Cabinet, because although he's been doing these things for me so far, the problem is he's not allowed to speak at Cabinet and has to sit at the back, so he has to technically brief me and I have to say it. It will also give Trevor greater weight when he attends these meetings, that he has a full Cabinet position. And one of the ones we particularly need to ensure we remain focused on going forward are Section 106 agreements. They're brought in by the district councils, because that is planning policy, but we do need to ensure that lead members of district councils and leaders of district councils are aware that we must, and this is absolutely essential going forward with the growth we've got, that we do get the contributions to education in the county. There is no other money available to us at all, except from developer funding, and one of Trevor's main tasks will be ensure we get that. And to be in the Cabinet and on the Members Advisory Group and on the Strategic Planning Group will be really, really helpful. So it's with pleasure that I ask Trevor to serve as a full Cabinet member.
Mr Shepherd?
Seconded, Chairman.
Mr Charlesworth?
It was going to be a point of explanation, Chair, but it's been answered by the leader.
Thank you, Mr Charlesworth. There are no other speakers, so we'll move on to the next item. So notice of motion, post sixteen, special education needs and disabilities transport. Dr Einan?
Thank you, Chair. And I would like to thank the Democratic Services Officers, who have helped to put this motion together in such a way that, I understand, councillor Rhodes will be prepared to second it. Part A explains the problem, and part B sets out what this council proposes to do about it, which is to support the parents, some of whom have been here today and are watching as we speak, and to work with the local government association... as we speak, and to work with the local government association to raise this issue via our local MPs whilst identifying the real costs of making post sixteen SEND transport a fully-funded and statutory requirement. Many people are unaware that there is this gap, and it has been now brought to the attention of Nick Gibb, Minister for Education, by Neil O'Brien on the ninth of September, and was brought to the attention of the Environment and Transport Scrutiny Commission Committee, where Councillor Alan Pearson gave his personal support to working with the parents, some of whom have just recently taken us to a JR. But historically, taking, being taken to a JR shouldn't stop us from working with volunteer groups and to our residents and parents, and it hasn't in the past. So what is our problem? Our problem is, was put out in the January twenty-nine scrutiny report to ENT, we've got a naught point six million overspend on SEND transport. We've got MTFS cuts lined up of three hundred and forty-two thousand. We've got costs rising year on year for SEND transport, if nothing changes, to three and a half million in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. We might be bankrupt by then. We've got increased student numbers, we've got increased complexity of needs. And why is that? Because, is it because more children are surviving longer due to better healthcare? Would be nice to think so. Is it due to better recognition? Is it due to the current design of our educational sausage machine that spits children out, and so we have to send them halfway across the county, or even out of county, to get a suitable form of education? But that's enough of our problems. Because the real problem is what it's like to be the parent of a sixteen-year-old child with disabilities. We have a statutory responsibility to provide SEND school transport up to sixteen. At sixteen, that responsibility disappears. So if you've got a child who's sixteen with disabilities, do you wave them off to school in the morning, go, have you had your breakfast? Don't forget your homework? My goodness, you can't possibly wear that. Are you wearing your cycle helmet? No, of course you don't. You feed them their breakfast. You might have to sort out their peg feed. You have to make sure that they go to the toilet. You might have to change their colostomy bag. You have to get them dressed, and sometimes you'll get pinched in the process. And once your child is clean and fed and clothed, they're sixteen, remember, you might need to get them into a wheelchair. Then you have to get them to school. Now, our solution to our problem has been personal transport budgets. No more traditional transport, it says. And it gives a nice option, a list of options for parents wishing to create a bespoke solution to their personal transport of their child, which all sounds very nice. You can arrange for a friend or a relative to cycle or walk with your child, you could pay for childcare for a younger child, get a bus pass for a friend to go with your child. There's quite a list. What you can't do with your budget is pay for a place on a school bus, even if there is one. There is an exceptions clause where individual circumstances can be accommodated, but it's not clear what actually counts as exceptional. And so what do we do? What do the parents do about a child who cannot walk, who cannot get on a bus, who cannot make social relationships, perhaps whose behaviour makes them a danger to themselves and others when being transported, and is having to attend a school fifteen miles from their home? The cost of privately arranging transport for some of these children, which has been sent to this council in the form of a document by the Close the Loop campaigners, is in the region of five thousand a year to twenty thousand a year. And that's what you'd pay if you could get a taxi, but there isn't, there are not taxis available to do this. We've nabbed them all already for our home-to-school transport. So some parents are now having to choose between going to work and taking their child to school. This includes nurses, teachers, a colleague of mine who is a GP. This is not economically viable when you think about the whole system approach. And though we are giving parents choices with personal transport budgets, for some of these parents, choice without opportunity is no choice at all. So I am very pleased that this council is prepared to look at this policy with these parents, take this issue to the highest level, because we haven't got the budget to just pick up all of these things ourselves. We are having to make those cuts that we knew we were going to have to make under austerity that would hurt, and we need to be going to the government, through the local government association, with our MPs, some of whom are now even closer to government apparently, so that we can get to this address for this council and for our parents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr Eynan.
Chairman, I rise to second this motion. Dr Eynan's certainly put forward a very sound, eloquent argument for making post sixteen SEND transport a fully-funded statutory service for councils to provide. The imperative for this move arises out of the council's recent decision to revise our support for post sixteens because of the increase in numbers and the corresponding increase in costs. It was and is not a decision which was taken lightly. It came about because of the significant rise in the cost to provide for greater numbers of SEND children over the last few years, and of course, the other significant pressures on our budgets, which are well-known to everyone in this chamber. We can all agree that we should try to give as much support to families with a child with special educational needs and/or disabilities, as we can. Many of us have had such children in our own families and know about the demands they make on the family budgets. When they reach the age of sixteen, these demands did not diminish, nor does the need for support. To have to pay significant sums for school transport can be a heavy burden on those families. It's even greater for those families who are not well-placed financially. The problem for the council is, as always, how to find the money from budgets which are already under considerable pressure. Since two thousand and fourteen, when education, health and care plans were introduced, the numbers of plans or statements, as they're known under the previous system, increased dramatically. Two thousand and fourteen, there were two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two children within an educational health and care plan. Now in two thousand and nineteen, the numbers have risen to four thousand two hundred and twenty-two, or fifty-two percent over the last six years. Funding has not risen to pay for the increased demand for the services these children need. SEND transport is paid for out of the mainstream council budget. There's no special allocation of grant, as there is for special education. That's a funding issue too, which the council is having to cope with, as is the capital cost of providing new special education facilities, which the motion mentions. SEND transport in two thousand and fourteen cost seven million pounds. This year it will be thirteen million, it's still rising. We estimate the cost of going further and providing free transport, as described in the motion, would cost this year an additional two point seven five million. But because numbers are still increasing, we can expect that this will also increase in the years ahead, as the full impact of ECHCPs takes full effect. The government has so far failed to recognise that funding is not keeping pace with the rising numbers of SEND children and young adults, nor with their needs after they reach the age of sixteen. And for the reasons I've already given, I think they should. Government quite rightly introduced a new system in two thousand and fourteen. Now I think it's right to ask them to go further and fund the transport costs in full, so all SEND children over sixteen can get access to the education they need without adding further to the burdens, without adding further burdens to their parents' household budgets. So I support the motion, second it, and I hope everyone will vote for it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Rhodes. Mrs Hight.
Thank you, Chair. As you'll have heard me before speaking about school transport, it'll be no surprise to you that I'll be supporting this motion. The reason for this motion was actually simply put by a parent in a tweet. It showed a ten-second clip of a young person being taillifted back into their vehicle in their wheelchair. The tweet said, this is how my daughter gets to school at sixteen. The same school, the same disabilities, same fifteen-mile distance, same legal requirements to get to school, but no support for transport. So that's it, in less than words of a tweet. So whilst there's a requirement for young people over sixteen with an education health care plan to continue in education, the provision of transport when those young people get to post sixteen changes. One of the areas we've talked about before is distance. Young people actually have to travel to get to school. For those over sixteen with a disability, the simple fact is their educational establishment is often much further away than the local comp, meaning that the school-provided option of transport is really, really available. Coupled with the nature of the person's disability often means getting to school restricts the use of public transport or getting a taxi. The pressure that then put on parents to get their child to school is really difficult. In my working life, I work for a housing association that provides support for people with disabilities to get accommodation. And conversations with parents always stick with me, one of which was with a solicitor. Her son had disabilities, he lived in one of our properties, and what she said was, she wondered how navigating life with a child with a disability was actually for other people without her training. It became a really difficult part of the work that she did, was dealing with the system. It seems to me that the law simply just needs to catch up. The statutory requirement is placed on the local authorities limited to the provision of transport, and provide transport where this is necessary to facilitate attendance. However, this position is too subjective, which is why we're asking the authority to support Close the Loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Hight. Mr Walsh.
Thank you, Chairman. It feels wrong somehow, fundamentally wrong, that we're discriminating in this way against one very small section of society, and one of the most vulnerable sections of society. It can't be right that we're having to do this. I would hope that there are some additional steps we can take, whether it's about exceptional need, whether it's about looking at the changes, hopefully, that are coming. It's been announced, hasn't it, that austerity is ending? Well, if it is, we have to be very careful that we don't use that released funding to do lots of other glamorous projects, but we remember these young people who are being discriminated against. So I'll happily support this, but I would hope that this council holds this problem in its mind, and if the opportunity comes along to help certain families because of exceptional need, or that funding comes available down the line, that we make sure these people, these young people, most vulnerable young people, are held at the top of the list of things that we need to do. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Mr Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. We discussed this, as Terry said. It's also important to remember that it's not just the transport, it's the specialised staff for some of these people required to attend in the vehicles. In fact, I was involved with one. Out of the six seats, three were special high staff. One of my friends has a wheelchair, which is thirty thousand pounds just for the wheelchair, so nearly as much as the vehicle picking them up. So having people with severe physical disability isn't cheap, it's expensive. I've got family and friends, and as I worked in other parts of the world with people with disabilities, it's the same, same all over. What encourages me is we're talking about it. This county council talks about it, we talked about it in scrutiny, and here we are now, bringing a motion, and this is how democracy works. So we accept it, we need to do something about it, we have got limited funds. I believe the more we work in the field, that we can actually bring in policies that we actually get more funds to the ones the most vulnerable. I think that's very important. I do support personalised programmes and funding, because all of us, I prefer to handle my own money, and a lot of the programmes have seemed very successful where we allow that. So I think we need to persevere, but be very careful how we implement things. But I really do support this. I support that this council is doing some really good work as well, but it's in difficult times. So I support this. Thank you very much.
Mr Payne.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And as lead member of the area, I think I can contribute towards this debate, and of course, I'll be supporting the motion. I'm very pleased to see number two in the motion, which sets out how we pose through our Children and Families Department to deal with the SEND provision and the education. And I think it's worth noting that the government's just recently made an announcement that they're going to put a boost of fourteen billion pounds into education, and we also note that seven hundred million will be dedicated to special educational needs. The problem I have as a lead member for this area is that historically DSG grants have not been used for transportation. Now, it's welcome to hear of the seven hundred million, and it's welcome to hear of the fourteen billion pound increase in expenditure in education generally, but we do have an issue here. And I do worry when I hear remarks, we're cutting. Actually, as Mr Rhodes has already set out, our budgets are increasing, we're putting more money, year on year and year, into trying to discharge some of our responsibilities. I also just want to pick up on with respect Mr Walsh's comments about discriminating. May I remind council that our recent policy that we've adopted has been through a judicial review, and all five counts have been found lawful. Now, you know, it's your choice of words to use, discriminate. I don't believe we are, and I'm sure you, you know, on reflection, would probably use a different choice of words, but it is the case that we have increasing pressures on our transportation budget, and we have the desire and will to be able to, if you like, offer a gold-plated service. Now, the motion, which I fully support, is a little bit unclear in that we all know we have responsibilities up to sixteen for main street, main school transport. Post sixteen to eighteen, there's an anomaly, because again, the Whitehall, the civil service haven't adopted legislation that fits the ongoing education requirements. And the particular anomaly comes from nineteen to twenty-five, when the government announced that people should be in employment, education or training. They didn't look at the transportation measures at the same time as where, how these education establishments were going to be funded. So it's bizarre to me that we have responsibilities from nineteen to twenty-five, where we have to provide free transport, facilitate free transport, but between sixteen and eighteen, there's a little bit of a grey area. So I certainly support the Close the Loop campaign in addressing that specific grey area between sixteen and eighteen. And my request to government, if there is more money coming into the system, please, 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 fully fund and properly fund local authorities to discharge our duties as well. And I mean, funding needs to come centrally. It cannot be the case that we have to raise council tax locally to fund these services. If the government want to move the goalposts in terms of the wider education provisions, they must consider the other implications of that, and transport is one of those, and they should fund it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Payne. There are no more speakers, so Dr Eynan has the right of reply.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank all members across this House for supporting the Close the Loop campaign. And I hope that those parents who asked us to bring this motion are satisfied that this council will be working with them, and I look forward to hearing more news about progress of that campaign through our lead member. Thank you, Chair.
Right, we now go to the vote on this. So can I have a show of hands for all in favour? That's unanimous, so it's carried. Thank you all very much for your attendance today. Have a safe journey home.